Good evening. I'd like to formally start this meeting, board meeting for the Cordova Rec and Park District Board of Directors at 6:30 on Wednesday, September 17th, 2025.
Members of the public can view the meeting live on YouTube and the link is posted on the agenda. Members of the public are hereby notified that meetings of the Board of Directors are recorded and requests for video recordings may be made to the clerk of the board. If a member of the public wishes to make a general public comment or a comment on a certain agenda item, please submit a blue speaker card to the clerk of the board and speaker cards are available on the table at the back of the room. And at this time, I'd like to welcome up owner of Beach Hut Deli Cordova Golf Course, Stephen Clement, and after the pledge, Recreation Superintendent Chase Michelotti will say a few words.
Hello. Would you guys please join me in the pledge of allegiance? A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right. Good evening Chair Sloan and members of the board. Before introducing Stephen, I want to sincerely thank Kevin Lorraine for his dedication in launching Beach Hut Deli at Cordova Golf Course. His hard work and vision made the deli a favorite among golfers and locals and we're grateful for his contributions and we wish him all the best in his next chapter. Now, I'm pleased to introduce Stephen Clement, the new owner and operator of Beach Hut Deli. Originally from Los Baños and a Sacramento resident for 14 years, Stephen brings a fresh energy and a passion for hospitality. With a background in telecommunications construction and welding, he's excited to dive into the new bar and restaurant world. Stephen is engaged to Amanda Amos, who will also serve as the new beverage cart person, and he enjoys golf, lake surfing, traveling, and smoking meats on his smoker. And we're thrilled to welcome him and we're confident he'll continue the deli's success with great food and a relaxed beach-inspired vibe. Please join me in welcoming Stephen Clement. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Welcome Steve. Look forward to going down there and hitting some golf balls and having a sandwich. So now we're at the item two, standing action items.
This is the portion of meeting where we deal with any requests to join remotely through AB 2449 and we receive no requests under the emergency cause provisions and we'll list it as no action taken.
Thank you Shelby. Would you please take a roll?
Director Danzel?
Here.
Director Yearwood?
Here.
Secretary Mattis?
Here.
Vice Chair Langen?
Here.
Chair Sloan?
Here. That takes us to item D on our agenda here, comments by the public.
Members of the public may address the board on topics within the district's jurisdiction that are not listed on this agenda. Speakers are limited to three minutes. It is a violation of state law for the board to discuss or take action on non-agenda items. Board members may only briefly ask clarifying questions or refer the matter to staff. And at this time, we receive no public comments and seeing none, there are no public comments.
Would any board member like to pull any items? No? Well, so seeing none, I'd like to go to our consent calendar.
Consent calendar items are considered administratively routine and will be acted upon in one motion unless separate action on a specific item is necessary. The chair person will consider any requests for discussion on the items prior to approval of the consent calendar and this evening we have four items for your consideration.
Okay. Would you may like to make a motion on the consent calendar?
Chair Sloan, I'll make the motion that we approve consent calendar items C1 through C4 as presented.
I have a motion by Director Yearwood, second, a second by Director Danzel. Roll call vote.
Director Danzel?
Aye.
Director Yearwood?
Aye.
Secretary Mattis?
Aye.
Vice Chair Langen?
Aye.
And Chair Sloan?
Aye. Item D, presentations.
Item D1, presentation by Jeff Morrow, USA Softball of Sacramento Commissioner of a grant award to the Cordova Recreation and Park District. This is an informative presentation only and no action is to be taken by the Board of Directors. At this time, we receive no public comment, so I will welcome up Recreation Supervisor 2 Nina Seiner.
Okay. Good evening Chair Sloan and members of the board. It's my pleasure to introduce USA Softball Commissioner Jeff Morrow, who has led the USA Softball of Sacramento since 2022 and previously served with the Greater Sacramento Softball Association, GSSA. CRPD partners closely with both organizations to support our adult softball leagues. Through their annual public agency grant program, CRPD has been awarded a total of $9,000 since 2013, funding important facility improvements such as dugout fans, bat racks, excuse me, distant markers, and upgrading seating chairs with umbrellas for our set. This year's $2,500 grant provided three new sets of turf bases for heavily used fields. At this time, I'd like to invite Commissioner Jeff Morrow to the podium.
Oh.
Yay!
Thanks Nina. Good evening. My name is Jeff Morrow. As Nina said, I've been the Commissioner for USA Softball of Sacramento, also known as the Greater Sacramento Softball Association, since 2022. We usually go by our acronyms, GSSA, so everybody usually pretty much calls us GSSA locally. But we are a nonprofit grassroots organization here in the greater Sacramento area that works with all of our adult and youth recreation organizations to provide softball tournaments, leagues, events, you name it. GSSA is here to help all of our local recreation and parks agencies with their softball program. We are one of 60 recrea-- I'm sorry, one of 60 agencies throughout the United States that are affiliated with USA Softball, which is the national governing body of softball. It's also a member of the United States Olympic and Paralympic Committee, which also governs the USA national teams as well as the USA Women's Olympic team that'll be playing in Los Angeles in '28. Currently, the Greater Sacramento Softball Association registers around 10,000 coaches and kids for the recreational league programs that are here in the greater Sacramento area as well as about 1,200 adult softball teams that play throughout this area. In our area, our footprint is fairly small in terms of the USA Softball's other 59 organizations, but our footprint goes as far west as Dixon and Winters, to the east, South Lake Tahoe and Truckee. To the south, we go to Lodi, Gulf, and a little bit of Amador County, and then to the north, the city of Woodland. All in all, it covers, we touch about seven different counties in this area. Locally, we work with 32 public agencies to help provide softball leagues, not again, not again, not only for the adults, but also for the youth, the youth recreational leagues that Cordova Recreation and Park District works with. And we do what we can to help in providing officiating services, insurance, we do clinics, things like that to help promote the game of softball that we all love and desire. Tonight, I get to do one of the things I enjoy doing as Commissioner, and that is assisting one of our local agencies and giving a hand up with helping out with their softball facilities. Over the last 20 years or so, USA Softball of Sacramento, GSSA, has provided over a quarter of a million dollars in grants to local agencies to help with their facility improvements, and tonight is one of those nights. We would like to award the Cordova Recreation and Park District 2025 Agency Grant for $2,500 to help improve some of their improvements to their facilities. This year, I guess it's going to their bases on the synthetic turf field. And I'm here to answer any questions you might have. I do have a check. For those of you who are regulars, we've been here a few times now and presented a check to kind of show what we'd like to do with all of our local agencies in supporting their efforts to providing softball for the adults and the youths in this area. Thank you Jeff. I appreciate that presentation. Board members, anything to say?
Fine.
Michael?
Thank you.
I'll just thank you for everything you do.
Well, thank you. Appreciate it. So could we get a picture with you? Yeah. Yeah. Thank you. Good job.
We got a couple of them.
Shelby.
We got, we got three here.
Hold on.
Yeah, the board's gonna come around.
I'll put it in the back though.
She's not gonna do anything.
Is that because of our negotiations?
We gotta balance this out?
Where?
This way?
Yeah.
Can you get us all in?
Squeeze a little bit. Yeah, squeeze a little bit. Squeeze a little bit on this side. Ready? One, two, three. Perfect.
Thank you very much. Congratulations.
There's a gift right there.
Oh, okay.
Shall we buy a check that's supposed to be here?
Matt's like, wait, the check's walking out the door. Nope. I'm sure he left the correct.
Then hold on.
That won't fit in the ATM machine.
So I'll make an announcement.
Okay. So thank you Jeff for that check. You can always use that. Brings us to presentation item D2.
Item D2, presentation by the Cordova Community Council on the 2025 Fourth of July Celebration. This is an informative presentation only. No action to be taken by the Board of Directors, and I'll turn it over to General Manager, Chair Patrick Lurkin.
Thanks Shelby. So on your diocese evening, there is a report from the CCC on the results and evaluation from the 2025 Fourth of July program, the third and the fourth of July. Shelley Blanchard unfortunately was not able to make it this evening to present the information, but the information is available for you. We can possibly see if Shelley is available at a future meeting for you guys to, if you have any questions about the report, for her to come and be able to answer those in person. So with that, we'll move on.
We can move on to the next item.
Alright. Thank you. That's item E, committee reports. We have none. Public hearings, we have none. So that brings us to our regular calendar.
Item? Item G1, approved concept plan for the community park in the Montalena Development and authorize the general manager to instruct staff to proceed with the development and construction of the park. And at this time, we receive no public comments. I will turn it over to Principal Planner, Terry Zeller.
Thank you Shelby, and good evening board. And tonight, Shelby has said that we have a concept plan for your approval for the community park in the Montalena Development. And we're looking for instruction for proceeding with the development and construction of the park. On the screen, you can see the, oh, let me back up. You can see the overall plan, and I'll refer to a few more slides as I'm going through. So as far as background goes, Cordova Rec and Park District and Montalena Douglas LLC, a California Limited Partnership, who was a developer, executed a development agreement for the Montalena Development back in August of 2013. So it's been a while. The purpose of the PDA is to establish the land dedication obligation and to outline specifics of the development within the subdivision. So at build out, the Montalena Development provides 10.8 acres for a community park and 4.6 for two other neighborhood turnkey parks, which are already constructed. Those are Hummingbird Park and Sparrow Parks. The community park site in the Montalena Development's located in the southeast quadrant of CRPD. It's west of Cambari Drive. Cambari Drive is on its eastern boundary, as you can see in the slide. And it's also running along the north side of Chrysanthemum Boulevard. The other side, the west side, is bounded by our city trail and also a detention basin. So when we, if we get the approval for this concept plan tonight, which this will complete the parks managed by CRPD and the Montalena Development. And of course, Board of Directors, as in all policy matters, has final discretion on the concept design for this park. I would like to take a moment to introduce, we have two of our consultants from Westwood, and that is Karen Folsen and Tim Hoenig. They're both here in the second row. I think they're the only non-CRPD folks here, so easy to spot. And they can answer questions that I stumble on. So as far as the analysis, the design for this park, we really looked at the site and the surroundings. And the design embraces and reinforces the natural areas to the west and the north of the park site. There is a nature preserve to the north. We can see cows grazing out there at any particular day. And with the detention basin, we really get a lot of bird activity. As a matter of fact, there are birds that we haven't seen in other parts of Rancho Cordova frequenting this area. So we're excited about the site. And the design really reinforces the natural areas. We're looking at using earth tones in the built structures, natural gravel paths, and also low-impact meadow treatments that harmonize with the native plant palettes that surround this park. The concept itself was developed based upon the overall input of two separate in-person outreach meetings. Karen and Tim were at both of those. We also had them put together online surveys, online surveys, and we also had neighborhood canvassing. The concept being presented tonight has a large dog park and incorporates elements of the central tower playground layout. That was kind of a combination of the options that we had in our second outreach meeting. Many people participated in this design and we hope to receive as much input for our future parks as we did with this effort. Just to let you know that the dog park as a central feature of this design is about a 2.34 acre dog park. Just to give you some relevant comparisons, Hagan Dog Park is almost identical to the size of this at 2.35 acres. The dog park that many people frequent on Bradshaw is 1.88. And also, the dog park that we're working with the city on designing and implementing in the near future is going to be around 1.9 acres. So that gives you an idea of how that acreage fits in. So the design for this park includes also two age-separated playgrounds, as you can see in this slide. And there's going to be a dedicated piece of equipment that allows for children who are physically challenged and able-bodied to play together. The shelter seats 48 people and is designed in a plaza that clusters the playgrounds, the shelter, the public restroom, and shade structures over portions of the playground on the east side of the park. If you refer back, you can see on the, on the east side of the park is where all of those items are, as well as a parking area that has 46 vehicle capacity. There are turf and open areas adjacent to the playgrounds and a shelter for passive play. With the balance of this open area is going to be treated as low to no mo meadow to minimize disturbance of the site and to harmonize with the existing meadow areas in the portion of Rancho Cordova where this park is located. The two main components of the park, other than the areas that I described on the east, are, as I had said, the Three Bay Dog Park as the centerpiece, and also a nine-hole disc golf course on the west side. So this is the nine-hole golf course as it's envisioned in the concept plan, and does have some connection to the, to the trail, to the city trail, and will also be a meadow area as the, as the ground treatment for that. The park is going to have an interior loop that'll have three fitness stations that were partially funded through a grant that was initiated through the Park Planning and Development Department. And also, we have extended paths that connect the disc golf to the disc golf area and the Class 1 Trail. That's a major piece of Rancho Cordova's alternative transportation plan. We also have, as you can see in this slide, a remote picnic area along the disc golf course that will allow you to be surrounded by birds of nature. Staff has reviewed this plan in conjunction with the park development agreement and our Design and Construction's manual. The park was designed to fit within the available budget, and we anticipate that design development's going to take place with your approval through 2026 with construction to begin in 2027. As we have done in past park, park developments, the Board of Directors will select a name for this community park at a future board meeting after the community's had an opportunity to submit proposed names, and I think Shelby has already worked on gearing up for that. As far as fiscal impact, there's not going to be a direct fiscal impact to CRPD because this park construction will be funded by the park development impact fees as outlined in the development agreement. The cost for the maintenance of the park is going to be covered through the Montalena Community Facilities District, CFD 2014-01. So I am here to take your questions. Like I said, Karen and Tim are here too. And we hope that you enjoy and like this design, and if you have any questions, please let me know.
Thank you Terry, for that presentation. Board members, Board Directors, you have any questions? Mike, Danzel?
I don't have questions. I have comments. This is an innovative design. This isn't something we've typically seen here, and it's bringing new activities to the district. So I'm very happy about that. Happy that we've got both sets of playgrounds in there also. But other than that, Terry, it looks, looks great in my opinion.
Thanks. Director Yearwood?
Yeah, I agree with Director Danzel. It's a nice to see that we're adding, well, people have been clamoring for disc golf, so it's nice to see we'll be able to give them a place to do that. I know we, dog parks are another thing that people are always looking for and asking for. I only have one question. In the page that has the, kind of the blow up of the disc golf, is that a wooden bench or picnic table? Is that what we're going to put in there? Is wood or is that?
Our standard is a concrete table.
So it just looks like it's a wooden one.
Yeah, that's, that's supposed to evoke the natural elements.
Oh, I got you. See, look, it looked like wood to me.
Yeah.
Good job. Good job team. Alright, that's it. That's.
Director Mattis?
No, yeah, this is great. I mean, I know there's a lot of people that have been asking for the disc golf, and so I know they're going to be very happy when they, they hear about this, and that more, more happy when it opens. On the dog park, is there going to be access how we were shown for the White Rock Park in the middle for maintenance so they don't have to go through the front? So that way they could open up the sides and go through?
Yeah, we're, we are planning this with the, with the Park Services Division to make sure that they've got the access through there. Yes.
Thank you.
It looks great. It looks really cool. Awesome, awesome design. Just a couple of questions. The universal piece of equipment, the surface that that will be on, that's going to be more of like, I'm assuming that will be more of a rubber, that rubber, I forget what the name of it is.
Yeah, it's a resilient rubber or it's, it's a rubber access. Yeah, it's a, yeah, the, the piece of universal access equipment will have access through a resilient rubber surface. It won't be the entire playground, but there will be a connection so that people with wheelchairs can access that, both children and if there are adults with disabilities that are bringing their kids to the playground also. And the balance of it is going to be our wood fiber mulch because that is our most economically maintainable surface, but we're definitely going to have access paths also. And I talked to the consultant earlier, and they're also planning some other areas of resilient rubber on exit areas of some of the playground equipment also.
Awesome. And then I see the picture of the, the fitness equipment where, I see where it might go, but the picture that you have on the screen right now, is that the one, does it go where it's kind of at the bottom?
Yes. Yeah, it's the, it's the half circle. That's outside of the other two pieces of the play area. Those pieces of equipment were designed to either be in series or you can group them together. And so this, this is something also that we had some feedback, not in our, in our outreach, but through correspondence that we had while we were working on the design.
No, I think that's something that's great. I know right now, just at my son's flag football practice, I just do a loop, but I'd love for there to be something to do a little bit more. So I think that's awesome. And then kind of the last one just has to do more with the flying, the, sorry, the disc golf. I think it's great. It's awesome. Excited for it. I also used to live fairly close to Shady Oak, which is in Orangeville.
Yes.
And believe it or not, there would randomly at times be discs in my front yard. So, so my question is more of, how do we, and maybe there's enough room. How do we make sure that, A, people aren't getting hit, which we can only control to a degree, right?
Correct. Yeah.
But more important to me is like the preserve area, make sure like, if a disc goes in there, is there a way to prevent people from not going in there to retrieve them? Or is that kind of more of an honor system type deal?
We don't have a design solution to keep people's discs from going into the, into the detention basin area. And also, if they throw them to the north, they're going to be met with a pretty high fence on the nature preserve side, and they might get chased by some cows if they go on that side too.
Okay. No, looks great. Okay, drop it.
Thank you. As a nine hole, it's got, it's, there's, there are shorter fairways than, than an 18 hole. So hopefully people won't be testing their arm on some of these.
From hole two to eight. You don't know our residents.
Thank you Terry. So I have a few questions. I'm glad to see that we're incorporating shade structures in all our new parks. That's, I know the community is really happy that we have those. Exploration parks especially, they were just raving about, we've got shade. Kids can play all day long. It's great. There was two versions of our, of the golf, of the disc golf. This was the popular one by the, chosen by the community?
Yeah, the, well, the, the community didn't really choose the disc golf. They chose the, the general layout. The disc golf course was actually laid out by--
You don't know our residents.
Thank you, Terry. So I have a few questions. I'm glad to see that we're incorporating shade structures in all our new parks. I know the, the community is really happy that we have those. Exploration parks especially, they were just raving about, we've got shade, kids can play all day long, and it's great. There was two versions of our, of the golf, of the disc golf. This was the popular one by the, chosen by the community?
Yeah, the, well, the, the community didn't really choose the disc golf. They chose the, the general layout. The disc golf course was actually laid out by a subject matter expert in our consultant's office, so we feel like we've got a good design here. And it's very subjective when you start to get into how to lay out a disc golf course. If you ask three people, you get four opinions.
We gave them two options.
We did, yeah.
Yeah. I just want to know that this is the favorite. I'm thinking, I don't know. They won't even know. No one's going to know. Okay, next question I have is the dog park. If you can show me the schematic. I see no shade in the middle of this dog park, I just see trees all the way around it. I'm assuming, or maybe, correct me if I'm wrong, there's going to be some trees planted in the, in the middle of this park for some shade.
When we get into design development, we're going to look at shade and see what we can do to accomplish that with the budget that we have.
And then you have a bird's whale, which is over there on number seven, they say it?
Hold on.
Number seven? Bird's whale?
It's a bio swale.
Is it bio swale?
Yeah, yeah, I know, it's tiny writing.
I thought that said birds, okay. So, but you did talk about birds, being able to identify certain amount of birds that come to this area. There was probably a good handful of different types of species that show up?
Yes.
Would there be any chance of having photographs or some information out there that, that people can be going to bird watching, could look for these birds?
We haven't programmed that in, but I think that's something that, once our design gets put in, that we can look at adding interpretive signage to advance the, the bird watching opportunities out there.
Great, that would be, that would be wonderful. All right, thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do you need a motion?
So, at this time, we'd like to take a motion on that.
Chair Sloman? I'm here with Board of Directors, approve the concept plan for the community park in Montalana Development, and authorize the General Manager to instruct staff to proceed with the development and construction of the park.
A motion by Director Danzel?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Langdon. We'll call a vote.
Director Danzel?
Aye.
Director Yearwood?
Aye.
Secretary Mattis?
Aye.
Vice Chair Langdon?
Aye.
And Chair Sloman?
Aye.
That brings us to item H, Board of Directors.
Thank you.
Oh, we're going to double back. Is Shelley here?
Yes.
All right, we're going to go back to item D2 for a brief moment, which is the presentation by the Cordova Community Council on the 2025 Fourth of July Celebration. This is an informative presentation only, no action to be taken by the Board of Directors. And I'd like to welcome up Executive Director Shelley Blanchard.
I apologize, I think I'm late. I had instructions to come at seven, so I apologize if I missed my first round, so I'll try to move on quickly. I'm here to start out by saying thank you, once again, to the Cordova Recreation and Park District for helping us put on our nice little backyard barbecue for the region on July 34th in Hagan Park. So we were blessed with beautiful weather that made all the difference in the world from the previous year when it was 105 or, or higher. And so I prepared for you a little bit more detailed report, which you probably have, looks like this, but I thought it might be more fun to just sort of hit the highlights in our kind of Rancho Cordova by the numbers, because that really does paint a great picture of what happened on July 3rd and 4th in Hagan Park. Everybody always asks first, right out of the, out of the gate, how many people were there? That's always a big number for us. And this year was no exception. Looking at our online sales, our cash sales at the gate for tickets, giving out free and complimentary tickets, and estimating that about 4,000 kids aged five and younger were probably among those who come in without a ticket, because we don't charge for that. We placed our attendance at about 26,000 this year, which rivals our highest year a few years ago when we hit around 27,000. The numbers kind of tell the tale. We had parked in almost 3,400 cars over the two days. We set a couple of records. One is that when we talk about the Fourth of July, it's a very comprehensive event that includes the parade and our new run that we host. The number of marching bands in our parade hit 10 marching units for the first time. And that was our goal, and we set out to become the most musical parade in the region. And so this year, we actually were able to hit it. Lots of government permits involved, as you can see. We worked with three big new providers this year, and that's always risky and, in some ways, because it is such a complex event. But Atlas Disposal, our new circus called It's Showtime Circus, and our new carnival provider called Brass Ring Amusements, all of them performed really well, and probably to a higher level than we've seen in the past. We hauled out 46 light towers to light your beautiful park. We put up almost a mile and a half of fencing, both for aesthetic reasons, but more importantly for safety reasons. We had a new record for our All-America Mile Run. Last year, we had about 122, I think it was 120 registered runners. This year, we had 344 registered runners. So we ought to say it takes three years to get something sort of locked down, and this was year three, so here we are. I think we've established a new fun event in our city. There were no arrests at the Rancho Cordova Fourth of July, there were no injuries reported to us or to Sacmet or Fire, so we're happy about that. Sold $30,000 at the beer. That's not a record, but not bad. We sold for, for our share of the ticket sales, we sold $128,000 of the ticket sales. We don't get all that money, but we did have a good year for that. We had to jump on board the food recycling world of recycling, so that boosted the number of garbage cans out there to well over 200 garbage cans. And if you want to feel sorry for yourself, put yourself in charge of lining all of those garbage cans three or four times over a two-day period. Had lots of ice, lots of porta-potties, though we think we need more next year. And new weather, that was, that was the big gift from on high. We never even got to 90 degrees on either day, which really always just brings out the crowd. We provided you with a profit and loss report. When you get down to the bottom, you can see it is in the negative by almost $61,000. That is typical for us. Actually, this is a little less than normal for us, reflecting your really great ticket sales and also some cost savings we were able to achieve this year, so we are happy with that. It's not totally complete, because we haven't closed out a couple of items. For example, we don't close out our beer sales until we pay our taxes, which is in September at the end of this month. So with that, just talking a little bit about our relationship with your great staff, once again, above and beyond expectations on the part of, you know, Jill and the management team for sure. I think over the years, we've established a really great working relationship there. And, I'm going to say the kids, the guys who come out and, and women who help us on the maintenance crew, I mean, they are working hard. And it's, it's a beautiful thing to see how they've taken ownership of the event. And that I was, I'm sure you see that all the time, when you're doing your events and your activities, that when that happens, everything just happens at a, just a more, a higher level, and that certainly was true this year. They really did an outstanding job. We continue to be concerned about the impacts we have on the park and on the neighborhood, and we're really working hard. We've met already with, to mitigate those, we've met already with Metro Fire and Rancho Cordova Police Department to talk about some improvements on traffic management in the area next year, continuing to stay on top of all the fireworks ordinances and changes that happen at a regular interval. You might remember years ago, when we started this, our safety fence for, for the fireworks zone allowed us to have activities, what we called our kid's zone, down towards the train area. And now, as that, those safety zones continue to march out further and further and further, we don't even have room there for a kid's zone anymore. And also, our growing, our growing crowds, we feel we just need to provide more space for human bodies, and we take that very seriously and have, you know, removed some of the things we might have done many years ago, just to provide additional space for comfortable enjoyment of the park on the Fourth of July. So those are kind of the high points. I provided a lot of detail, but I feel like the most important part would probably be your questions, which I'd be delighted to answer, if you have any.
Director Danzel?
Thank you for putting on a great event. I mean...
Thanks for your help.
I, we had a very talk, so yeah, there's not much to, to really say. I'm glad the information's there, I'm glad our numbers are going up, and like you said, you're already working with the police department and the fire department to figure out the neighborhood situations, because those got bad this year.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We, we know we are impacting the neighborhood in particular, and each year, when I think I've heard it all, I hear something new of what people do to establish parking spots to avoid a $10 parking charge. But we'll just have to keep hammering away at it and see what we can do to ease the impact on the, on the neighborhoods surrounding the park.
Director Yearwood?
I only had one, one question. I could be wrong. I thought in years past, did we get like demographic information, like where people were coming from?
We have, we have collected that, yes. I can provide that to you.
I'm just curious, I mean, is it Ramon and Rancho folks, or is it?
It's, it's mostly Rancho Cordovans, of course. But there are a lot of people who are coming from the surrounding area, no doubt, no doubt about it. The thing that always shocks me, and it makes me almost challenge the survey takers, and that is that so many of the people who take the survey say it's their first time there. When, you know, this is an event that is for the community, has been for the community for 40 years, so it always surprises me at the high number of people who said, oh, I had no idea they were for, for the July fireworks, really?
They don't live in that neighborhood, huh?
But you know what? A lot of these people are new. They are Rancho Cordovans now, and they're, they're discovering their new city and community for the first time. So I guess that's to be expected with all the growth that is happening in our neighborhoods. But I'd be happy to send that along to you, so you can, you'll have that.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, because I'm wondering if, I'm wondering if some of those new people are, that missed out on fireworks shows with the incident that happened with the fire provided before the Fourth of July.
Right.
Shows were canceled. I'm wondering if some traffic came from that. Plus, the weather was great, too.
Well, the weather, for sure, Mr. Mattis, that we believe is the, the game changer. There were not that many, we are familiar with the, with that provider, we, we have, we have knowledge of them. We have not used them on this event ever. Looks like we probably never will, for obvious reasons. But there were not any Fourth of July shows canceled in our immediate area as a result of that accident. The nearest one that was canceled, and maybe we got a few, was in, from Lowdy. But I feel like that's really not in our immediate area. People probably would not travel from Lowdy to come here for the fireworks, although there are probably some. So I don't really feel that we were impacted by that event.
That's good to know.
Yeah, I, there was a lot of angst in the marketplace when that first happened, like, oh, how is that changing anything? But when it all boiled down, I think there was one show that was canceled up in Eldorado Hills, and that wasn't even a Fourth of July show, and then the one down in Lowdy, so...
Well, good.
Yeah.
That's good, yeah, when I saw the numbers, I was just, I had, you know, you had, you knew it was going to be better than, than last year.
Oh, yeah.
With those 110, 112 degree days, and so...
Well, you got to be careful what you wish for, though. As we, as the group, as, you know, that comes to this event grows, and, you know, we, we're at max capacity, we really are.
That's good.
So these are, these are good problems, but problems nonetheless to struggle with.
So now you're getting ready for your, your haunted house, so that's all starting then.
Yeah, well, you all come to that. We have plenty of room there, lots of parking, all the parking your little heart could possibly desire.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No questions, just thanks for putting the event on for the community. You know, I'm out in Rosemont, but, you know, I know that there's a lot of people from Rosemont that come, and so...
That's correct.
It's a great, it's a great time, great experience, and so thanks, and thanks for the report that shows, shows what's going on.
Okay, well, you're welcome. Thank you for having us, for sure.
So I guess the catch-22 about this event is the fact that getting in and out is the hardest part. I've heard, I talked to a lot of people who did not want to come because it takes forever to get in, take forever to get out. So I know that that has to do with completely getting larger and larger every year, and...
Why don't you build us a parking garage in your park?
We had like a three-story parking structure, yeah, that would be great. Where would that go?
Right.
So, you know, that's the thing, I mean, it's, it's a great event, but like, one of these days, we're going to outgrow this Hagan Park, which is...
There's no doubt about that.
And a lot, most people are buying prepaid tickets online.
Oh, yes.
Most of us, very little.
Yeah.
Because a lot of people that I, that were, some people don't know about that, I guess. They still arrive, and they think they can buy them there, but it costs more money at the gate.
It does, it's actually double. But you can buy them online for the $5 bargain price, right there on your phone, right at the gate, you know? But still, people will say, oh, no, I, I don't like to, whatever. And then they fork over extra dollars, and we'll be happy to take them from you. We've given them every opportunity. And one thing that may not be reflected is we do give away a lot of tickets to groups that serve our neediest populations in Rancho Cordova. We want these immigrant, immigrant groups who are coming to our country and have no idea what the Fourth of July is all about. We want them to come and experience this little piece of Americana as they're becoming Americans. And we actually, looking ahead to next year, when it's the 250th birthday of our great country, we expect, you know, that this would be a big focal point of the year, not only in our community, but across the country. And when all the TV stations are talking about the Fourth of July, and, you know, everybody's talking about it because of this big birthday, we think that that could generate our biggest turnout ever. And we're, we're already talking about that and coming up with strategies to sort of handle crowds like that. The one thing we don't want to do is charge people out of coming. You know, we don't want to make it a have-and-have-not kind of event. We want everybody to be able to come, you know, for the Fourth of July.
From the beginning, when I was there, it was like, free. Then it went to a dollar.
Mm-hmm.
And now we're what, at $10 or $5?
Well, it's $5.
$5, $5.
Yeah.
And kids are free?
Kids five and under are free, yep.
I think it's still a fantastic event, and I appreciate all the, Rota Community Council and the cities and all the volunteers that come out there to make it so...
Yeah, well, you know, it takes a village, so thank you for all the support, because of course, we wouldn't even be able to imagine doing it without you, for sure.
On Chair Rick's comment, though, but you have to remember to look at the number of permits they have to get to put this thing on, and the insurance and the cost, so that's the reason why, you know, dollar, $2, $3, $5, I mean, they got to...
Yeah, they're one of those light towers?
Yeah.
Five or $600 plus the fuel to run them.
Yeah.
I mean, it's very expensive.
Yeah.
But it's, for example, one thing I did, go into somewhat detail in the written report is just the added cost and importance of security.
Yeah.
You know, adding metal dete, well, weapons detection, that's $14,000 right there, just for weapons, for two days, for weapons detection. And then on top of that, we invested almost $15,000 on paid security... And then, on top of that, we invested almost $15,000 on paid security to make sure we're safe. You know, in this day and age, you have to agree, I'm sure, that we don't want to have to spend this kind of money, but we need to make sure people are safe. And as you get larger, you become a target for the bad actors out there. So, we are investing a lot of money in the safety of our guests and your facility and all of that, so... But that just does add to the bottom line, no doubt about it, for sure.
There was a high presence of police out there.
Yes.
They did a great job. It wasn't like they were out there looking for trouble. They were just kind of like...
They were there. And a lot of them, you didn't even know they were police officers. We had 60 police officers working that event over the weekend. Think about that. We are so fortunate that our, you know, that our local police department supports us that way.
Well, I appreciate the music you guys bring in, and I do miss the kids' zone. It was always my favorite place to go take photographs.
Yeah. Well, your photography, of course, beautiful. Again, Rick, thank you very much for capturing all that for everybody. And I share your feeling about the kids' zone, but gotta have room for those bodies.
I saw Cyrus Avard go down a zip line.
Yeah, we did a lot of those crazy things in the good old days.
Even the bird exhibit we had with the parrots was, I thought, fantastic. Right, thank you, Charlie.
A lot of these things, by the way, are not insurable through your, you know, in your, with your new rules on live animals and everything, the insurance ceilings, I get, well, you have to do it, but we can't meet those, and our providers can't meet those high ceilings, so some of those things are just going away.
Thank you.
Yeah. But...
Any other questions? You guys? Go. Thank you, Charlie.
Okay, well, thank you, and see you at the 41st Annual Rancho Cordova Fourth of July. Be there or be square, right? Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
All right, now I'm totally mixed up, where am I?
We're at item H2A.
Board member reports?
Correct.
For item H2A, Directors Danzel, Yearwood, and Chair Stone attended the CSD Annual Conference. And item H2B is the Community Activities Report. And we've received no public comments, so I will turn it back over to you, Chair Stone.
Okay, well, then, let's start off with this CSDA Conference. And Director Danzel, you want to kick that one off?
Sure. Thank you, Chair Stone. Conference is always a special time, because it's a chance to get with other agencies, even outside of park districts, especially at this one, and hear some of their stories and see what works for them, and different things like that, those contacts, those connections, they can help you over the time, which is great. Keynote speaker, I'm gonna leave that one to Director Yearwood, but keynote speaker on day one was great. Learned some history that day. Some of the classes I went to, this one didn't have as much board members as they had in the past, training-wise, and so, there was, so it was picking and choosing. Some of them I had been to before, but we were paying for me to be at the conference, so it was go to a class that I'd been to before, or sleep in, and I wasn't sleeping in. So, the first one I went to was Bridging the Governance Gap, Addressing Turnover, and Board Team Resilience. Just talks about as, you know, electeds get changed out, or if they leave for some reason, you know, how do you, how do you talk, how do you talk to new members and let them know what's going on, your history, how to set some of that stuff up? Next, one of the other classes I went to is Demystifying Public Surfaces. What brings it a special, what being an effective special district board member means to you, your organization, and your community? Once again, just talks about how the electeds need to be out and be that face to the community and talk to, you know, and support the, you know, the district's mission, or the water district, or, you know, cemetery district, whatever district, but how to be there as a support and a sounding board for your community. Let's see. I know some of the other members went to some of the same classes or similar classes, so I won't take them all. Local elections, combating misinformation, deceptive AI. It was interesting to see some of the things that are coming out, AI-related, when it comes to elections. And didn't talk too much about individual elections. It did talk about how to make sure that the district is safe when it comes to those things and people, because they're finding districts that have, and not park districts, but districts that have fake websites up and fake information that's being put out there against them when it's campaign season. You know, somebody's created a whole brand-new website, and here you go, and you think you're going to the district's website, and you're going to somebody's private page to, you know, get misinformation. Let's see, this one. Better board quality, better, better boards equal better districts, best practices for board members. Just some of the same things that we've gone over time and time again. Make sure you're Brown Act, make sure you're communicating, make sure, you know, you're there and spending the time with your community, so those are, those are mine.
Thank you. Director Yearwood.
I guess I'm talking about the keynote speaker.
You can talk about...
I'm gonna leave the chair to talk about our keynote speaker, if you would like to do that. Would you like to do that, sir?
Sure.
Okay.
I mentioned a quote that he gave us.
You got a quote for him? Outstanding. I hope it wasn't "Go break a leg." You'll all know soon what that means. You know, it's, I've been to that one before. It seems to sometimes, in my opinion, that topics tend to sometimes be more heavier on something that would benefit staff more so than board members. I, too, attended the Bridging the Governance Gap, Addressing the Turnover and Board Team Resilience. You know, one of the things the speaker mentioned, you know, every two years, you have the potential of having 40% of your board turnover, or 60% of your board turnover. It was nice to hear a lot of the things they say you should be doing, like board orientations. We're already doing those things, going over financials, trying to get folks educated. Meeting with your general manager. I was shocked to discover some organizations, their board never meets with their general manager, except when they're at their board meeting, so that was kind of intriguing. Then, let's see, in the afternoon, demystifying public service, what's me and you, you know, Director Danzel, were you in that one, too?
Which one's that?
Demystifying, was that the one you wrote?
I believe so.
Yeah. You know, that was an interesting, where it was, it was a lot of the same topics and things that they've discussed before, but the interesting was, you know, we're not there, board is not there to manage, they're there to govern. Some districts have problems with their board members trying to manage the district. I heard some horror stories about that. And then, on to the next day, what did I do on the next day? I think while you were in the AI class, I was in, oh, red flag, Handling Road Board Members. That was an interesting one. I honestly, I went to that one because I knew the speaker, Brent Hodge, from previous classes, so it was, it was all right. I mean, I think you probably could have had a longer time, that's for sure, because there was a lot of people who had a lot of questions and nothing earth-shattering in there about just, sometimes folks will get on a board for a single issue and have to kind of remember that they're there to serve the entire community, not just their little, whatever their concern or issue was, and things of that nature. And where'd my last little note thing go? Oh, I didn't know we talked about our speaker on the second day yet. I don't remember what his name was, and I can't find it here now. But it was pretty good. I enjoyed the second day, too, the magician. And he had some good, some good things to talk about. And better board equals...
Oh, thank you.
Yes, it was Brad Montgomery, my apologies. He was pretty good, too. Both speakers were really good, so, because some years, they're, well, I'll be honest, there were some clunkers out there in some of these things I've gone to. And then, I also went to the better boards equal better districts. So, that was, nothing really earth-shattering there. We're doing what we're supposed to be doing, so that's all I've got.
That's a lot.
Chair Stone, go ahead.
You had a lot.
Well, I didn't want, no, I, last time, remember, I said too much, and you didn't have anything to talk about.
Yeah. Well, I did learn one thing about the conference, that the Cleveland Browns will never be Super Bowl champions. Joe Theismann, he makes this announcement, "Are there any Cleveland Browns out there?" And it's one woman raised her hand, and he walked up to her and showed her his Super Bowl ring, and she says, "See that? You'll never see one of these." So, I don't know if that's true or not, but it was interesting. The one, the quote that he left me with, I thought was interesting, is that people won't care about you until they know how much you care personally. So, that was kind of interesting, you know? You don't expect people to care about you unless they know that you care about them, so... The conference was, they always, it's a class act conference, there's 1,000 people in this room listening to these keynote speakers, and I know it's a lot of work, but they do an excellent job. There are different agencies there, so it's not just parks, but it is interesting, because we sort of have an overlap of responsibilities, you know, Brown Act and all sorts of different policies that we have to adhere to as being a special district. Well, one thing that I went to was playing by the rules of Brown Act, and I realized, and I just thought, you know, now we have these social media platforms and, like the City of Rancho Cordova info page, someone could be on there talking about something, and I can make, some people can make comments. Well, as a director, we have to be careful that three people don't comment about the same thing, too, especially if it has to do with any type of thing that could happen in our agency. So, that's something that we have to careful, even if, I think, even by liking it. If I like it, and Danzel likes it, and Yearwood likes it, that's three directors that are seeing that they like, all like the same thing. So, that, we have to be careful about.
Do you have a policy about that?
Well, I know, but those are things that you, you get, these things come up, and you don't know, you don't realize it, that you're, you know, it happens so fast, and new things are being put up all the time, so... Another one was local, oh, that's the one, Director Danzel talked about, the AI deception and all that. But one was building big projects and slicing through community concerns, how to get the community on board with you for making large decisions in your district. But the one that I thought was interesting was from chaos to calm, how to avoid disruptive public meetings and how to handle them. So, you'd have, you have, they gave us various scenarios, and they had people, you know, ways of how you would diffuse somebody who's definitely off the charts angry, but there's ways to get to that person that you can make them feel like they've been heard, and that will address that, and will look into that, and will get back to you without, you know, hurting those feelings and escalating the problem. But all in all, I thought it was, it's also team-building for the staff, too, and the directors, because we are out having dinner together, and we're having lunch together, and we're, you know, it's, and we're sharing our, you know, different thoughts together, and it's always nice to have that. So, basically, that's my take on the conference, CSDA. I'd like to see you guys take advantage one day. Maybe you'll have that opportunity, or at least the CARPD conference would be a great one for you, I think, because it's all parks. So, now that also takes us to board member reports, right? Community activity reports. Start with Director Danzel.
I have a few, very few. On August 23rd, Cupcakes Memorial. Thank you for all that attended. It was well-attended, and you'd think that, you know, it's a donkey that's been around for a few years, but there was quite a few people there, so it was great, great to see. Conferences we just talked about, and then this last weekend, Meet the Machines, which was, once again, a phenomenal event. You know, every year, it seems to change and grow a little bit and be more on target. That's all I've got.
Thank you. Director Yearwood?
On August 23rd, I attended the Cupcakes Memorial as well. It was amazing how many people were there. I don't think I'll have that many at my memorial service, so...
It depends on if you're a jackass or not.
Oh, well, then I'll definitely have a lot of people there. And then, of course, I did attend the conference we've already talked about. And then, I also was at Meet the Machines last weekend. It's always a nice event. The park looked great. Those kids just love beach balls being blown up, blown up into the air by the old leafblower thing. They just really look forward to that, and it's a good turnout, and I was amazed, did that train stick around long enough for all those people to get their rides? Because it would have been dark, probably, by the time they did.
They stopped the line.
That line, that line was unbelievable, so, but that's it.
Thank you. Secretary, Secretary Mathis?
No, I have nothing, but I was, the Meet the Machines, that's the one I was planning on when I saw on the calendar, the kids' football schedule, worked out, it was supposed to be at Bella Vista, but of course, it was an air. We were in Colfax, didn't go to Colfax, we had to go to Golden, Bear River for the football game. So, missed, I was very disappointed we couldn't make the event that day. So, hopefully, next year, we'll have it on there.
Vice Chair Langdon?
Yeah, so, August 23rd, Cupcakes Memorial, just a great, just a great, great little event, and definitely could see the love that everyone had for it, for him, so... And then, on September 4th, I had the opportunity, Rosemont Community Association asked me to do a little presentation at the meeting, and so, I spoke just about a little overview, and then I gave a little bit about who we are, and then some highlights for this, from the spring and summer, and then just some project updates that are coming up, so that's it.
Thank you. On Wednesday, August 20th, I attended, before the board meeting, the elected officials' reception, Rancho Cordova Chamber of Commerce area, at the high-class auto sales. I was thinking about buying one of those cars, but, and driving it to the board meeting, but perception of community, you know, you just don't want to drive that kind of car, right?
Trading the Mustang.
Trading the Mustang. Anyway, that was a pretty nice event, even though I was only there for like 40 minutes. Saturday, August 23rd, Cupcakes Memorial. The photograph in the agenda package was fantastic, and I'd like to see, I'd like to get a copy of that. I thought it was fantastic. It was a great shot, and it was, I know Cupcake would be very proud, happy, that what, all those people that came and that loved him, and it's kind of, it's, I don't know what we're gonna do for the nativity scene at the tree lighting, unless Director Yearwood wants to put on a costume.
He hasn't, he hasn't been out there for years. Where you been? He hasn't been out there for years.
I've been out there.
He hasn't, not recently.
I got...
No, he hasn't.
Oh, was there nobody, was it a pig I was taking pictures with, big ears they put on or something?
Wasn't anywhere.
I gotta take, I gotta look at my photographs. Maybe it was Director Yearwood. All right, well, on August 25th, the conference, August 29th, which was also my wife's birthday, was, I went to the concert in the park before the football game. And those concerts are getting so popular in Village Green Park, it's almost a packed, it's a packed house, I'll say this, it's very crowded. And it's, they're picking really good groups. This group, that line was Mercy Me, the Mercy Me Band, and people were having a great time, and that's, it's, it really makes our park look alive, you know, you can feel it. September 13th was Meet the Machines. What can I say, another great event, the great weather, everyone was having, everyone was happy. Everyone loves to, even boarding an RT bus. I mean, I don't know why it's so exciting, but they couldn't wait to get in there. They're waiting in line to get into an RT bus. And RT was charging them, too, wouldn't they, Michael? I don't want to...
No, kids ride free. Come on, man.
Kids ride, kids ride free.
Geez, dude.
Okay, and then, also, on that night, September 13th, it was the 10th Annual Cordova Sports Hall of Fame. I attended that event, and for 10 years, we've been inducting people into the Sports Hall of Fame, and it's really, is making this community really... It's really is making the, this community really, it has like this index of greatness that we just keep adding more and more to, which is, I thought very amazing. I don't know how long we can keep doing that. That's, I was wondering, is it gonna, it's gotta run out one, one time here, doesn't it? I keep finding people that come up.
Well, they haven't tapped any of the new area. There's no athletes from the Anatoli area that would have gone to Pleasant Grove or areas like that. There's, none of those folks are.
Maybe they will.
They're definitely in the eligibility. They have to be out five years, so that might be something they should look into.
You're right. And then the other thing was on last night, Tuesday, September 16th, I attended, it takes the Lincoln Village Community Meeting. And I'll give you a little heads up. On October 18th, they're going to have a, an event called Tent and Treat. It's not going to be a trunk or treat, it's going to be a tent and treat. And they are looking for people to come there and put up a, a tent and give out, hand out.
What was, what was the day?
October 18th.
Is that a Saturday?
At Lincoln Village Park.
That is a Saturday.
Is it a Saturday?
It is.
Okay. And so we want to look into that. It's a, it'd be kind of a good opportunity. They're having a contest for the best decorated tent and costumes.
I don't know if you can win that twice. I've already won it.
Charlie Brown, not, not for this event. Charlie Brown, you know, could easily win this. And they're also, they're mentioned, their, their December 11th holiday parade will be happening again this year. And that's my board report. Which takes us now to. Item I.
Item I-1, District-wide Monthly Progress Report for September 2025. And at this time, we receive no speaker cards. I will turn it over to General Manager Patrick Larkin.
Thank you, Shelby. All right, a couple of highlights from the month. Staff and I met with our Arch Nexus Consultant, who is working the feasibility study Suh of Mather Sports Center and the center property. We went down to their offices in downtown Sacramento and we walked through a visioning exercise with them to get an idea of, you know, some storylines associated to what we see as the vision for those two properties to kind of tell the story a little bit better about our feasibility study, which will be coming by the end of this year. We, at that meeting, found out that the community surveys that we had received at that point were really not that high in number and so we put it back out to the community to raise the number of responses. So far, so good. I believe it closes on October 19th.
We don't have a firm date at this time, but it'll be relatively soon.
Relatively soon. We want to get those numbers up so we'd have a good data set for you guys to understand that we got a good sampling of folks to give us feedback. I also attended the Cupcakes Memorial Service and I want to really do an amazing shout out to our communications staff to get Larry Terry Gary from Parks and Recreation, the show, to do a personal kind of call out was incredible. I, I mean, that is like unbelievable that you guys were able to pull that off. So great job with that and it was an amazing event that they also produced. It was very heartfelt and the attendance was incredible, so kudos to the communications staff on all of that great work. I also attended the CSDA Annual Conference in Monterey and I also attended some conference sessions that were very interesting related to, I think I was in a couple with Rick, related to how to manage through difficult board meetings that may have a conflict of, you know, people being upset about a certain topic that's being discussed, so that was interesting. And also how to really improve your community outreach efforts. Happy to say that we do a lot of what they were trying to train us on. So I was kind of taking the temperature of what we do compared to what their best practices were, so. Kudos to Park Planning and Development on what we're already doing very, very well, so I appreciate that. Speaking of Park Planning and Development, the staff did a staff retreat and they were able to go out to a couple of different parks in, in Rosemont area. They also came back and we did a StrengthsFinder training exercise with the group. It was a great opportunity for the staff to bond. They have a lot of new staff in that department, which we're grateful for. And so that was a, a fun day for them. Also, I attended a CSDA hosted SAICOG education training that we produced for special events or special districts to be educating SAICOG on what special districts do. So we ended up taking a tour of the Sacramento Sewer District. Ooh, a lot of poopy jokes that day, but it was an amazing facility. It's huge. So it's on lockdown, so no one really gets to go in there. So we had the opportunity to get the, the tour, the backstage tour of all of the operations there and it was a great way for us to network, met with SAC Metro Fire representatives, some other park districts. South Gate was there, actually the only other one with South Gate was there, and then we had a lot of water districts represented on that tour. So a great way to network as well as have CRPD represented in those important meetings with SAICOG. Our fiscal year 2024-25 independent fiscal audit is in progress with reviewing internal controls and scheduling field work for financial statement testing. Manlove Parkway Replacement Project started on September 4th and that will go through till the end of October most likely. Once that is inspected, the fences will come down and we'll let the board know once that is completed. So that's exciting, a nice fall project that we started. Also, there is the poles project at Rosemont coming up on October 3rd. Will be the installation day for the poles in the Butterfly Garden. This is phase two. And then on October 11th, there'll be the dedication ceremony for those poles. So we're excited to move to phase two of that project. I believe phase one was redone, some of the poles. They redid some of the poles because of the graffiti that occurred after that last round. So also on page 37 of the report, I'm happy to show you guys that there is a new smud box at the Village Green Park that is looking like poppies at this point. So we've done some artistic approaches to shrink wrapping with art, some of the utility boxes and the example of that is on page 37. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to our amazing Director of Parks and Recreation, Jill Nuns.
Well, thank you, Patrick. So again, thank you to everyone who came out for Cupcakes Memorial Service. Obviously we had a lot of community members out, probably over 100, just showed you the impact that Cupcake had on our community. I also want to give a huge shout out to Matt Zimmerling, our Recreation Supervisor 2, who did a ton of work to make this happen. First of all, like I mentioned, he has been instrumental in making sure that that barn is well taken care of each and every day, but he really did take really good care of Cupcake. And then when Cupcake passed away, he did a good job of making sure that we celebrated Cupcake's life. So thank you to Matt Zimmerling, thank you to Chris Nelson, who also took really good care of Cupcake. Of course, huge shout out to Community Relations, Elena and Haley. And then also Mark Hagan, Park Services, and his team did a bunch of work as well. So again, another great team effort just to make that event possible and it was, it was, it was a really nice ceremony. So as you can see in my report, as highlighted, the golf course had another outstanding month with an increase in both rounds and revenue. And the Park Services team has been hard at work on a variety of projects while also preparing for a very busy fall season. In recreation, the hideout has a new logo and so we're super excited about that. So as we start the new year, they're going to start out with a fresh new logo. We're also thrilled to expand our Teen Express Shuttle service to include River View STEM Academy, now offering transportation and programming to their sixth graders. So that's really, really great work by that team. So the school year is off to a strong start with enrollment surpassing last year's numbers and daily attendance averaging 20 students. So that's fantastic. Over at the Senior Center, we celebrated National Senior Citizens Day with a full week of festivities, not just on National Senior Citizens Day. Staff organized a variety of fun and engaging activities to honor and appreciate our seniors throughout the week. And also our get up and go trips continue to be a huge hit. We recently filled another bus for a second trip to Muir Woods within just a month. So that's a popular spot for people to go. So kudos to the NOSEC staff for making these experiences memorable for the community. And then on September 9th, Patrick, Shelby and I met with the City of Rancho Cordova leadership, including Chief of Police Matt Tomeo, Assistant City Manager David Quong, and Senior Communication Officer Samantha Mop to strengthen collaboration between CRPD and RCPD on community safety messaging. We received, we reviewed RCPD's response categories, which ranged from active crimes, which is their priority one and twos, to delayed reports, which is their priority fours, and emphasized the importance of detailed caller information to improve response times. Our existing coordination includes direct contact with Pop Sergeant George Carsons and participation in the Monday morning hot team meetings. Our Park Services team, Kelly Rungy, right now is attending those meetings, which are tremendously beneficial to both us as well as RCPD. A key concern raised was the tendency of residents to post about incidents on social media rather than using proper report channels, as we've noticed with Exploration Park. To address this, CRPD and the city will align messaging across platforms to clarify where and how to report issues, encouraging more effective community engagement. RCPD also confirmed that current CRPD signage is sufficient from their perspective. We greatly appreciate the open and productive discussion and the spirit of collaboration that continues to help inform our community, enhance public safety and maintain strong lines of communicating moving forward. And a little fun fact is that you no longer have to get a hold of 911 by just calling them. You can also text 911 if you have an issue. So something that Nicole Lowery had told us a couple, like about a week ago in a meeting, she was like, "Yeah, you can text 911." Well, the Chief of Police, you know, said, "Yeah, if you're in a situation and you're not able to actually call and you need to text 911, I think that's important for everyone to know." Jim and I talked about it today at our one-on-one, so he can pass it along to his staff. Chase has passed it along, but pass it along. So if you're in a situation, especially a situation where you can't talk, you can now text 911. So, good information, so appreciated. So again, very appreciative that we were able to set up that meeting and move forward. So Shelby, as our Communications Manager, will work with the city for that messaging moving forward. And then on September 11th, our Community Relations Team proudly represented CRPD at the Explorer Rancho Cordova New Resident Welcome Reception held at the MAC. This event provided a valuable opportunity to connect with new residents, introduce them to the district and share information about the wide range of services and programs that we offer. The reception was well-attended and we appreciated the chance to engage with our growing community. Okay, now on to the next, Board of Directors Special Event Invitation. So this Saturday, we have the Rosemont Community Celebration, which is hosted by the Rosemont Community Association at our beautiful Rosemont Community Park. That's from 10 to 2 PM, so hopefully you will be able to attend that. We do have the Future Community Park at Grant Line 208, Arista del Sol Development's Second Community Outreach Meeting here at the CRPD District Office on September 23rd at 5:30. We have Barktoberfest. I know I'm bringing a new puppy dog that I have to this event, who loves the dog, who may or may not have jumped in the fountain today in front of Hagan Park. But anyways, so we have Barktoberfest at Lincoln Village Community Park and Pool on Saturday, September 27th, from 11 AM to 2. And then Patrick already told you about the dates for the phase two of the poles installation as well as the dedication. And just so that you know, the phase one poles have been painted primed white. And so each group is going to go back and repaint their poles. We're going to actually repaint two because one of the groups did not want to go back, so we went ahead and volunteered to paint one of the other group's poles. So hopefully those poles will be repainted by the dedication that's going to happen on October 11th. And with that, that completes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. I bring this to item J, J-1.
Item J-1 is our Articles Correspondence and Public Outreach and item J-2 is our CRPD Calendar for September and October. And at this time, we receive no public comment.
Okay, now we're going to.
Item K-1 is the Liability Claim Pursuant to California Government Code, Section 54956.9. Claimant Miguel Duarte, Agency Claimed Against Cordova Recreation and Park District. And at this time, we receive no public comment, so we can recess.
So at this time, I'd like to recess from this, this meeting and go into closed session at 7:55 PM. So at this time, I'd like to recess from this meeting and go into closed session at seven fifty-five P.M.